We also updated our Dignia coordinators, which were appointed by the board last month. So this was the appropriate time to update that. And then other, one more thing, under prohibited student conduct, there, under academic misconduct, there was plagiarism language. You know, we thought it prudent this day and age to add language there about artificial intelligence. So just like we would not expect our students to go to encyclopedia or a book in the library and copy and paste things into their own work and call it their own, we would not expect our students to use AI to pass off as their own work as well, without proper citations and things of that nature. Okay? So that being said, we'll first, if there's any questions from the board about the changes in the code of conduct, be happy to certainly address those. Okay? Then the next step would be our public hearing, and this is where we can have comments from the public. You know, Dr. Cox, if it's all right, we'll open it up to the public for any question or comment.
Open to the public for any public comments regarding the code of conduct changes.
Thank you. So that is it for the policy part of our session, and the board will see later in the agenda the opportunity to adopt those policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. At this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Russo up to provide an update on some of our summer programs.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Welcome, everybody. Each summer, we have a variety of programs that we have in place to keep our students engaged with their learning and activity and just having fun. It's a pleasure to be able to do them. I want to thank Dr. Santorello who's with us this evening as well for her work, as she coordinates so much of it, but also beyond that, the administrative team, Mr. Freel, Mr. Stuckey, our principals, that work so hard with that camp, and of course, our teachers that take the time over the summer to work with our students as well. It's really awesome to go to those camps during the day over the summer and see the kids out there. This year, of course, we ran our Cougar Camp. It's so much fun to see how our kids engage in sports they love, trying new things, and what the coolest part is watching them work with our student athletes and our coaches that are out there, just really enjoying their time together and being engaged with things they love and the activities that they enjoy doing. We do a variety of sports, pretty much every sport at this point that we have has a camp out there, and for grades three through eight, and it's been an ongoing tradition here and something that we're really excited about, and really, I think it's become part of the hallmark of our community. So thankful to everybody that was able to be a part of that, and we look forward to continuing things like this. Next, we had our music camp that we had in place. Again, just an awesome opportunity to get kids introduced to music, where our students that already have a passion for music kind of continue the opportunity to practice their craft, but beyond just practice and things like that, there's also opportunities that Mr. Stuckey and his team take to put in place where they can try things like world drumming, ukuleles, xylophones, different instruments while they're performing within their ensembles as well. And again, just an opportunity for our kids to really have fun and enjoy their time together out there. And finally, our discovery camp that every year just keeps growing, and not just in numbers, but just in ideas and things that we're doing out there. Give a lot of credit, like I said, to our. A kit with how to build a small boat, and they built that boat with a little mast, and they had the opportunity the next day to float it in this pool and try to see how much weight it could carry. And to see the kids with what really was like the cliche term of productive struggle as their ships really weren't holding a lot of weight and instead tilting over because of the weight of the mast on top of the ship, but then to hear second and third graders saying, I know, when I build my own, I'm not going to put a mast up there like that. I'm just going to build a boat. And it was just so cool to see the thought process that went into it, and that's what we talk about when it comes to learning through discovery, is really just kids figuring out what they can do to make something better. So it was just really, I think that embodied everything that we're trying to do at these camps, is to give our kids an opportunity to explore learning, explore new things that they may love, and find more of the things that they're passionate about as they get involved. And of course, like I said, most importantly, it's an opportunity for our students and their families to remain engaged with one another and with our community and our school that does such a great job. So again, thank you to everybody that was involved in our camps and all the work that went into it. It's a tremendous undertaking, but something that is, when you see the people that are working there, they love it, but by the time the camp ended, a lot of the teachers we were there that day were already talking about ideas they had for next year. So I mean, it's a pretty remarkable program that we have, and it's something I think we're really proud of, and as a community, we should be really proud of. And so thank you to the board for continuing to support that, and again, thank you to everybody that was a part of it, and most importantly, those people that got it off the ground and kept it running for us.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. So at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Palapoli up to share some of the amazing work that his team has been doing over the course of the summer to get us ready, because we have certainly transformed some of our spaces in our buildings, and I'm excited for the community to hear about it.
Hello?
Hello?
Thank you. Yes, so Dr. Cox, I appreciate it very much. You know, first off, I want to thank the board, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Cox, Dr. Cox, Mrs. Newman, for all the support we've gotten this summer. It's been a busy summer, and I'd be remiss without thanking my staff, Mr. Trial, my maintenance crew leader, Mr. Rogers, my other maintenance crew leader, because they've been instrumental in the work we've done this summer, so I definitely want to thank them. So right out of the gate, I'll definitely go over the lobby at the high school. It's amazing. I mean, I think Dr. Cox can attest, the last two days, the transformation it's made has been incredible. The window was actually put in in the security booth yesterday. These wood slats along the main lobby were done last night, this morning, and they'll be wrapping up pretty much the lobby piece of this Friday evening around 11 o'clock. So it's been a great project. It's the work that's gone into this with the company and the staff has been amazing, so something the district should be very proud of, I think. The Bloomberg Lab, again, another project, that floor actually went in today. It's just been, you know, fast-moving-paced project. I think the students and staff, when they finally get in there and see the work that's been put into that and what the final product will be, it's going to be amazing with the furniture, the ticker around this roof of the room there, it looks almost like the Nasdaq stock exchange. It's going to be so impressive that, you know, renderings don't actually do it justice compared to me walk in and see it. It's just, it's amazing. So I'm very proud of this project, and I think the district should be too. One of my favorite projects this summer has been the gymnasiums. I think the second day I was here, I went to Mr. Freel and said, listen, we got to do these gyms. I said, I want to get these gyms done. They just, you know, they were, they served its purpose, but I think I just, you know, that collegiate feel we're trying to bring here to all the buildings and the campuses here, I want to really do something through these gyms. And I know Dr. Cox, Mr. Freel agreed, and Mrs. Newman, so we went ahead and just did a complete sand to the wood. That again, took about three days. You can see in the left there, the process, I mean, literally, that belt sander's going across that for a few days, taking about 20 years of polyurethane off those floors, but the finished product is just incredible. The top right there actually is the north gym at the high school, and you could see the vision of Dr. Cox and Mr. Freel how it's kind of giving the volleyball team almost like a showcase piece, almost like a, you know, I guess, a display of when they do their work, and it's just, it kind of sets them up for a great game. So I think it's a beautiful progress on that. Again, the middle school gym as well, I think that's another thing that, you know, another thing I want to do as soon as I came back. It's just been probably a good 20 years since that floor is done, complete sanding. And you see the big paw print in the middle there. We did the two-tone stained wood by the half-court key there. And just when you walk in, you see this gym and how impressive it is, and I think kids when they come back on the third, they're going to be walking and go, oh, my God, this is my gym. It's just going to be incredible, so I'm excited to see their faces. We did some updates over at the middle school. The main office was completely emptied out the day after school. My staff took everything out of there. The ceilings were taken down, all new ductwork was put in, new lighting, new grid, and, you know, they have now centrally seen heating in their offices now. Actually, it was turned back over to the district last Friday. The staff is back in the office already, and, you know, they're already using it as never happened, so they had really no idea it would happen until they got back. So it was turned over pretty quickly, and it's a good project. Marion Coral Farm, this is an in-house project, and, you know, I think I'm kind of biased about what our staff can do, but they literally laid X amount of linear feet of concrete within like three or four weeks. So basically, you're looking at the left-hand side there, is when you pull into Marion Coral Farm, there's a walkway that'll go now to a 30 by 30 pad for an instructional space. Ms. Santorello's working on some tables for that, and then if you see on the right there, that path continues down to the bee sanctuary, and that now is complete. That was completed this morning, so I couldn't get a picture fast enough of Dr. Cox, but it was finished today. So I mean, again, another project that we took on in-house and succeeded with it, so I'm proud of the team for doing that. And I think, again, it just goes to show what we're trying to do with the students and staff here, bring them to the farm, you know, an educational space, you can go see the bee sanctuary, and I think it's an exciting time for the kids here in Comac, for sure. You know, I want to showcase a little bit of the grounds department. You know, these guys, they're in and out every day, and me and Dr. Cox talk a lot about, you know, the fields and the grounds, and he'll text me, hey, it looks really good here today. I'm saying, they're trying, they're trying, they're trying. But this is something before and after over at Smith's Lane, something I want to tackle. If you see in the left there, this is like probably a few days after summer ended, and we just want to take the fence down, clear it, clear it up, so you can see now the new windows we put in two years ago, and I know it's the staff, they really appreciate the look of the building now, just cleaned the whole place up, so I'm proud of that. HVAC, these products are moving on pretty well, actually. Last two weeks have really picked up as far as ETAs on equipment. There's been startups every single day this week, startups this week continuing on. So it's, you know, we're at the mercy sometimes of suppliers, but I will say, myself, the architect, the project managers have really been pushing to get everything installed. So we're in a good place, we're almost at the finish line, we're getting there, but, you know, we'll be pretty close. We're getting there, though, for sure. This is new floor we put in the summer over at Indian Hollow and Northridge. So this is kind of the way we're going with floors now around America, actually. VCT flooring is kind of going to the wayside. Factories aren't really producing anymore, they're going more to an LVT, which is a vinyl floor planking like this. So we put this in Indian Hollow's main office. Mr. Simpson received it in his office, his conference room, the main office. Michael Sturtevant painted the whole office, and in the right there, that's a room over in Northridge that Mrs. Ream wanted done. So I was talking to Dr. Cox and Mrs. Newman a few weeks ago, I said, eventually, I'd like to start incorporating this in some of the classrooms that are old nine-by-nines that eventually we have to basically abate and replace, so this might be the path we go down the road. District-wide painting projects, we definitely got very eager this year with my maintenance crew leader, Mr. Freel, sorry, I'm sorry, Freel, Trial, I apologize. We didn't paint classrooms, we painted wings. So we literally painted, if carry up a mistake, and the whole A upper and lower wing, painted many offices in the high school, and this is going across the district. So, you know, we want to start really, not just doing a couple rooms a year, doing wings of buildings a year, so we really turn over the whole entire, the district that way. In the middle there, that's actually Burr's new guidance sentry space. He's actually, instead of us spending the money to replace the whole grid, we popped the sealant tiles out, painted the grid, and then replaced it with new sealant tiles. So it's a cheap way of doing it, giving a brand-new look and facelift without having to spend a lot of money doing it, so I definitely think the staff and Dan over there, Burr, really appreciates that, for sure. This is the district-wide diamond cutting project. This is something I'm very excited about, passionate about. You know, if you'll remember growing up as kids, walking into Macy's, we see the floors, and it just, it looked like glass. So this is something we're trying to do throughout the district here, and actually, it's a big savings regarding wax. We save a lot of money as far as that throughout the year, and all you do throughout the year is actually, you just have to polish it again. So, you know, you basically, it's almost like a wet sanding of the hallways. It's a little labor-intensive, you can see in the middle there, we have a designated team just doing it throughout the district. We finished up four primaries. We just finished up actually the high school, or finished up the high school cafeteria, and we will be doing this weekend, actually, Bloomberg, I'm sorry, the high school lobby. So it's a nice project, I'm excited to get it done, and with the finished product, as you see, it's, it looks like, you know, you're walking on, I think, Dr. Cox, but last year, you looked into one, went into one building, you said, is this wet, can I walk on this? And it's just, it polishes so nice, so definitely, it's a good project. This is the high school auditorium. There's a few things we're planning on doing in there, but the first thing I want to do is that stage, it needed it, it's been a long time coming, so we literally emptied the whole stage out, painted it like a flat matte black as Mr. Biaggi wanted, because you really want something flat for the stage for reflection when they're doing performances there. So as you can see in the left there, the before and after, it's night and day, and it definitely needed it. The carpentry crew in my team has been very busy doing office build-outs, sentry spaces that you see there throughout the district have been doing, and they're getting so good at it now, it's just like they're NASCAR doing it. I'm really impressed with their project, progress on that. And we plan on eventually doing some other additions to the high school auditorium, some new paling on the perimeter, but we're getting there, but I just wanted to get the stage done this summer, for sure. I think that's it. Again, I want to thank everyone for the support this summer and this whole year. We've got a lot accomplished, and I'm continuing to push envelope as much as I can, but thank everybody for your assistance doing that. Any questions?
Just want to thank you and the staff. Again, summer is the big push time, so never easy to get all this done, then get everything all back together as everyone comes back next week, so really excited to do some tours next week to see what it looks like, but yeah, thank you to you and the staff for working hard this, I mean, a lot of different schools, every school got touched, which was great, so looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah, we try to give, you know, touch a little something to every building, to feel they're definitely being appreciated, which they are. We try to spread it out as much as we can and what their wants and needs are, for sure. Absolutely. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think it's great also, just to note how much of that work is actually done in-house, where in many places that has to be contracted out, and we have such a talented staff here that's able to do these projects, take them on, and do them at such a great, you know, not only savings to the district, but just quality work, so thank you.
Yeah, we truly have craftsmen here. You know, a lot of districts have maintainers that are kind of the jack of all. We have that, but also our maintainers are actually craftsmen, carpenters, plumbers, welders, masons, HVAC, so in a pinch, if I need something handled, if there's a power outage, I know who to call, I have somebody right on my right hand, so we're definitely very lucky to have that, for sure. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palapoli.
Thank you.
I'll take the clicker. Thank you. So before moving on to the board goals, I definitely want to reiterate the work that the facilities department does. It's hard to imagine the work that you're seeing here are projects that are taking place at the high school and in multiple buildings, but they're also at the same time cleaning every single classroom, pulling every desk out of every single room in the entire district, plus contending with eight or nine inches of rain. I'm sure many of you experienced that here in Comac, where we took on a little bit of water, and they had to clean rooms more than once, but they did a phenomenal job in 24 hours. It's amazing, the turnaround time. The pad and sidewalk that's being built at the Marion Coral Farm, the amount of concrete that's being laid, and that is being laid by somebody that's in-house, that works for Comac, that's a craftsman, a mason, he built our pickleball courts. He's just, Adam, right? He's extremely talented. So Adam, if you're watching, you know, keep up the great work. Tell your crew we appreciate everything that you're doing. I'm even going to go back just a little bit to, I mean, it's, to take a look at this. It's always been one of those things, we have students that are visiting the Marion Coral Farm, they're getting to see we have a bee club at our middle school that visits the farm and works with the bees, but to now have an actual infrastructure at the Marion Coral Farm where students can walk along a pathway, and not only that, right there where you see that pad is going to be an outdoor learning center. Well, we'll have some furniture out there, because we had some students visit the farm this year. You may have seen on our social media the cabbage-growing contest. I think one student grew a cabbage that was close to, was it 15 pounds? I mean, it was almost as big as the student. It was incredible, so. And another thing that I just wanted to point out, it's hard to, when you're looking at the Bloomberg Lab, you'll see in this picture right here, this is the main hallway when you come in the lobby and you make the right. These are the windows that you'll be looking into the Bloomberg Lab, and what you see here, this black part right there, is tile. And what's going to be on the tile, it's going to say the School of Business. And if you walk just a little bit further, there's the hallway that goes to the courtroom, and it will say the School of Law. And in due time, when you first walk into the lobby, at the end of the lobby, there's going to be a wall where it says the School of Engineering, the School of Fine Arts. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a moment as I go through our board goals, because it's pretty incredible how we're transforming the way students feel about school. So talking about the Board of Education goals, when we start to develop goals, everything we do revolves around our educational program continuum. This is our, these are our guiding principles, and you see, we've kind of enhanced it a bit. We've always had the boxes that you see across the middle that are a foundation in our elementary school, moving on to NYPD and enrichment and student choice, getting into high school and trying on some pre-college-level courses, ultimately trying college-level courses in 11th and 12th grade, and they're leaving us academically prepared to make the best decision for what they want to do after high school. But there's a second piece that we're adding, and you'll see the words that are up there, there's 10 of them, there's 10 attributes, there's 10 traits, and that's our learner profile from our IB program. So we're now incorporating that into our educational continuum, because it's not just about the academic piece that's going to prepare our students for life after high school, it's about them instilling the social and emotional skills that they need to be successful, not only within Comac but beyond Comac. So if our students truly embrace being an inquirer, being principled, balanced, communicators, thinkers, caring, open-minded, reflective, we are going to graduate some really successful students, not only academically but socially and emotionally as well. So when we talk about the goals, it's really important that we create goals that will drive our decision-making, not only now, in the immediate future, but long-term as well. And some of these goals are carried out year over year, because some of these things we're not just going to be able to accomplish in one school year. So the four areas that we're addressing, one, the first goal is curriculum instruction and assessment. The second one is social and emotional well-being. Third, community, communication and community relationships. And the last one, district business and operations, Mrs. Newman's favorite. So the way that we set up these goals, you're going to see, you are going to see the goals right here for curriculum and instruction. And then afterwards is the, really the exciting part. So the board develops these goals, and then it's really our job to make sure that we carry them out. And when I say carry them out, we want to give you some examples of some related actions of what this could look like over the course of the year for '24, '25. So under curriculum and instruction, enhancing and enriching our K-12 curriculum, meaningful learning opportunities, integrating real-world applications, you'll hear me talk about that time and time again, creating an innovative and high-quality professional development for our staff, and cultivating an atmosphere of cultural awareness, and celebrating our individual differences of our students and our staff throughout the course of the year. So here are some examples, some related actions of that curriculum goal. I am really, really excited, because we're doing some fantastic things this year in our elementary schools. We are going to be piloting a number of items that, if they are successful this year, we will look to try and include them into the budget for the '25, '26 year. So for example, expanding our enrichment opportunities in our K-2 buildings. So next year, we're working with a Bozzi's consultant, we're going to have tower gardens in every single one of our primary schools. We will have a curriculum so that every student in our primary schools gets to touch the tower garden. We're also going to be looking to create lunch and learn opportunities for our first and second graders. This is something for our intermediate students, they've had the opportunity to experience lunch and learn, and it's always been something, we want to start to bring that down to our primary schools, give our primary students that opportunity, so that's something that we're going to be piloting this year. The Discovery Den is a pilot program. So when our students come into school, they come in learning through exploration and discovery, and this is a perfect opportunity to create a space that is equipped with age-appropriate technology. It's going to have tablets, robotics, green screens, and it's really going to be a place where students can explore, and it's all going to be based off of hands-on experimentation. We also, piggybacking off of the Marion Coral and some of the work that we've done there, we're going to be piloting in our intermediate schools an agricultural education pilot. So we're really going to try and take advantage of that space at the Marion Coral Farm. At the high school, we're expanding our IBCP program, so students who may be interested in an educational pathway get to sort of test-drive an educational pathway. in an educational pathway get to sort of test drive an educational pathway. For those that said they wanted to become an educator in high school, left, spent good part of my college career taking three years of courses, and then I finally, in my fourth year, got to step into a classroom and thank goodness, I loved it because you can imagine after three years of making that investment and then stepping into a classroom, if you realized you didn't want to be in that classroom, that was quite the investment. So we want to allow our students, before they go off to college, to sort of experience some of these opportunities, to make sure whether or not they fall in love with it or they realize after 20 seconds of being in a classroom that they're going to head in a different direction. Schools of study. So this is one of the reasons why I wanted to show you the main lobby of the high school. And when you walk through that main lobby, first away, first you're going to be blown away about how beautiful it is, but once you turn that corner and you see School of Business, School of Law, you see a sign that says School of Engineering. Students are going to start thinking about school differently. You know, as a student, you come into your school, you're thinking, I'm going to math, science, English, social studies, world language. But if you're an eighth grader visiting the high school, you're watching your older sibling playing a concert, or you're just a ninth grader coming to the building, or even a 10th grader, you walk through that hallway and you start to see School of Engineering, School of Law, School of Business, what does that mean to me? Students don't typically see that in a high school. It's going to get them to start thinking about, I might be interested in a course like that. That course, not only would they be interested in the course, but it also leads to so many different career opportunities. And what better way to have our students in 11th and 12th grade really start to think about and test drive different careers that ultimately they will pick a college to go to and look to pursue that career. And if they fall in love with it in Comac High School, well then we did a really good job preparing them to make the best decision possible at a 17-years-old to decide where they want to go and perhaps what they want to do. So the schools of study is something that we're really passionate about because we feel that that type of branding started in the high school. It started with creating pathways. It started with conversations about trying to create real-life spaces, creating a finance lab so the students can take what they're learning in an economics class and apply it in a real-life situation. I mean, we have been writing curriculum where students are going to start researching stocks and mutual funds. Then they're going to go into the Bloomberg Lab, they're going to have access to software to monitor that, they're going to be learning about checkings and savings. I have to give a little personal story. I'm living this right now. My 15-year-old just graduated, a freshman, he's going into sophomore. I don't know how that happened so fast, but he got his first job. And he comes home and he's working on a cat tree fishing boat and they give tips. And I said, "How'd you make out?" He goes, "I don't know." So I said, "Well, let me see." And he starts pulling crinkled bills out of his backpack and I'm having palpitations. And we started talking about, well, what are you going to do with that? We start talking about a savings account, a high-yield savings account. It is so critically important to provide that education to our students because they are going to be getting jobs at 15-years-old, you know, 16, 17-years-old. And having an understanding of, learning how to maybe become a saver before they become a spender is really important. And understanding how money works in the world is so critically important. And we are making that sort of a cornerstone here and a graduation requirement for our seniors next year. And there's even been conversations about getting some of our younger students into that financial literacy lab even sooner. So great work to the high school, really proud of the work that you're doing there. Of course, we have a literacy initiative that our curriculum department has been working on. We've been packing this room out with teachers that have been working and developing curriculum to make sure that we're in line and we're providing, it goes back to that educational continuum, the best foundation for our students as they move up through their journey. And you'll see two new enrichment courses at CMS. So we're thinking a little bit differently about our enrichment courses, too. You'll notice that there's a mock trial and an American justice system enrichment course, which is kind of in line with the School of Law. So students get to start thinking about different interests, trying out their interests, and if they are, they can really build upon that at the high school. Sports marketing lives a little bit in the business world. Maybe after they test that, they might want to pursue some of our business courses at our high school where we have a School of Business. But again, the schools of study, I want to go back to that for a second. The schools of study do not require students to select specific coursework because some may say, like, how is my child going to fit in all of that coursework if they select the School of Medicine or School of Law? They don't have to select any of that coursework. If they're in the School of Medicine and they want to take anatomy and physiology or college health professions and really dive in to that area of health sciences, they can, but they don't have to. What the School of Study is going to do is that if a student belongs to a School of Study, School of Engineering, our ultimate goal is to really expose them to professionals in those fields, to learn more about those fields in engineering, to bring in college admissions counselors, to tell them, what does the education look like? What does the time commitment look like? So it's not just the coursework. If the student has room in their schedule to take specific coursework associated with some of those schools, we have that. If a student is undecided, they're not sure yet, we have a School of Liberal Studies and we can work with those students to say, what are your interests? Maybe we can open up some new doors for you. So again, the schools of study is not a defined pathway for students that have to take coursework. It's an opportunity to really learn more about careers in those fields. So moving on to goal number two, which is our social and emotional well-being goal. We want to provide students with essential academic skills while fostering their social and emotional growth. We also want to continue to enhance our partnership with Northwell Health and we want to also support the emotional well-being, not only of our students, but our staff as we try to create the most nurturing space in our high school. So what do some sample-related actions look like? So number one, I showed you earlier our educational continuum. Those 10 traits that are within that world of our educational continuum are our learner profile traits. Next week, I'll be sending out a welcome-back message to our community, which will also include our vote on what we are going to call the learner profile K-12. So if we want to celebrate a student that is interested in becoming, that is interested or has truly embraced the learner profile traits, I'm going to give you a little sneak peek because here's what we've narrowed it down to. The choices are going to be either a Comac champion, a Comac trailblazer, a Comac influencer, or a Comac role model. And we're going to let our community and our staff vote on what they think that learner profile should be called if we really want to celebrate it over the course of the year. We are going to also review our current social and emotional programs to ensure K-12 articulation and determine if there's opportunities for growth. The board will be receiving shortly a very comprehensive report on all of our social and emotional programs K through 12. It is something that we most likely will post to our website so that the community can see all of the social and emotional programs that we have. There's a possibility that we may bring back, we haven't decided yet, a committee to really focus on expanding and ensuring that the Comac learner profile, or what it eventually becomes, is infused K through 12 so that there's a common language. And again, over the course of COVID, I know, we don't want to go back, but there are some positives. And we, you know, over the course of COVID, the district did a really good job bringing in some research-based curriculums on social and emotional well-being. And now it's time to really try and revisit those and see, are these things that we want to keep, continue, expand, et cetera? So that really plays into the reviewing our current social and emotional programs. Again, enhancing our partnership with Northwell Health, expanding our drug and alcohol prevention and intervention groups. We work with Horizons, which is a phenomenal group that comes in, works with our students, provides some PD. So really excited to have them back. Goal number three, communication, community relationships. We want to emphasize the importance of open communication, collaboration, active engagement with our Comac families. We're doing, or we've been doing, a very in-depth review of the district's external and internal communications. And we want to continue to facilitate various Board of Education-level committees. So here are some sample-related actions to that. We will be implementing Parent Square, which is a great way to engage every family with school communications and communication-based services, ensuring seamless interaction between district office, the community, teachers and their classrooms. We've been doing a lot of work with some ambassadors, some of our staff that have been coming in to learn more about that. We are looking to redesign the district website. This seems to be one of those goals that does keep going from year to year. We are going to try to revamp the website completely so it's much more user-friendly. One example is if you are on our website and you go to one of our schools, the tabs stay exactly the same as they do on the homepage of our website. Whereas this new website will allow us, when you go to a school, say Northridge or Comac High School, to tailor those tabs specific to that school, which will make it much more user-friendly. Once we get very close to completing this site, we are going to bring in some of our parents to test-drive it and provide some feedback before it goes live. But I think the community is going to be really impressed with the new website. And thanks to our tech department who's been working on this tirelessly. By creating a new website, one of the other things that we want to make sure over the course of this year is that we want to make sure that our scope and sequence, our curriculum guides are easily accessible on the district website. So if you look at our website right now, under departments, you may see a tab for athletics and for music. In our next website, there will be one for math, for social studies, for science, for English, et cetera. We want to have a tab so that a parent can go to any one of our content areas and they can learn about what that scope and sequence is, K through 12. We want to be transparent with what's going on in our classrooms because our staff in our classrooms are doing an amazing job. And I look at it as more of a celebration of what we're doing in those rooms. Continue with the Legislative Advocacy Committee and make adjustments as necessary. Also determine the need to form other board-level committees. So for example, possibly District-wide Technology Committee. We have put together two reports this year. One is a five-year plan for technology, another one is a five-year plan for facilities. I think it's a great opportunity because we have so much work ahead of us in the area of technology and Ms. Pulliam has done a phenomenal job to really bring together so that we also have connectors out there that can talk to members in the community about some of the things that we're doing in the area of technology. So I will share with you that in the September board meeting, we will be presenting the five-year plan for technology and we will also share opportunities for members to join our District-wide Technology Committee as well. And goal number four, business and operations. Recruit, select, and support instructional and non-instructional staff members. Believe it or not, here in Comac, in the next few years, we have close to 200 of our seasoned staff members that are eligible to retire, which means there's going to be a tremendous hiring process. We have, over the years, created programs for new teachers, first-year teachers, second-year teachers, third-year teachers. Dr. Santorello, Dr. Inforner, Mr. Russo, and the team, the curriculum team, has really put together a solid program for new teachers to continue to learn over the course of the years that they're here with us to make sure that they're successful. We want to continue to evaluate our health and safety protocols and we want to support the district's multi-year plan for maintenance and improvement in facilities. I had just mentioned, we have a five-year plan for facilities. It's not the most appealing things, boilers, pipes, heating pumps. I know that's like the things that everybody loves to replace in their homes, but in a school that's, you know, some of the buildings are aging 60 years, it's time to really start paying attention to those. And I know that Mr. Palapoli has already started putting together a list of items that we're going to be working on over the course of this year. And also, always, always to develop a fiscally conservative budget. So just a couple of action items for our last board goal. Continually review and engage with our security consultants and law enforcement agencies to determine our strengths and our vulnerabilities. For example, one of the recommendations was to take the security booth that was in our high school and not have it in the high school lobby, but to try and move it so it's in-between the two doors where you come in, the first set of doors, and there's a second set of doors at the high school, but to have some sort of vestibule so that you can communicate with visitors as they come in. And that we accomplished this summer. So we do listen to the recommendations that they share with us, work with local precincts, homeland security. It's important to know that when our principals are conducting lockdown drills, there is a Suffolk County police typically standing right next to the principal, walking the hallways, providing feedback. Continuation of long-term fiscal planning, continuation of fiscally conservative budget practices. We are really proud and give credit to Mrs. Newman and the team. Year after year, we've been very consistent with our tax levy and it has predominantly been below what the Suffolk County average is. And even being below the Suffolk County average, you hear year after year, we are finding ways to enhance our programs when others are going above the Suffolk County average and in some cases, having to eliminate programs. So we are really proud of the work that we're doing here in Comac and that really comes with a fiscally conservative budget so that we can focus on the things that improve student outcomes. And we look forward to all of those things, those sample-related actions. We do have quite a list of things to accomplish this year. We plan on accomplishing every single one of these. And again, to engage in short and long-term staffing planning to maximize employee management. As I mentioned, over the next couple of years, we're going to be doing quite a bit of hiring. I'm going to let this sink in for a second because above and beyond is our baseline is something that I started just probably about a year or two ago, maybe just a year ago. And I have to say, it really resonates and it's one of the things that I want to share with our staff on Superintendent's Conference Day. Because not a whole lot of members in the community know that every single person that I interview, every probationary teacher, I tell them, you know, our expectation is above and beyond is our baseline. This is where we start. We don't believe in mediocrity here in Comac, above and beyond is our baseline. And to see emails from parents that say, this teacher, that my child's graduating, but remembering a teacher that they had back in kindergarten, that teacher went above and beyond for my child. They don't know about this, but this is really what we believe in. We believe that here in Comac, above and beyond is our baseline and we'll continue to do that. High expectations. Any questions, comments from the board?
Certainly, on behalf of the board, Dr. Cox, I want to thank you working with us over the past month to kind of solidify our ideas and put these board goals together. Again, these board goals will be posted on our website as always and we definitely look forward to kind of watching the year unfold to see, like, all the things that are going to happen. I'm especially excited, you know, there's so many great things happening in the high school. You know, Mrs. Lippinhold runs a very well-oiled ship out there and they really do a fantastic job. I'm looking forward to seeing what's going on there. But I think you heard a lot of our discussions regarding the elementary schools and some of the new things we're going to be powering down there, really exciting. There's a lot of, you know, new families that moved into the district, they've heard great things about Comac, so certainly we want to see how these power, and basically we want to make sure that if they do work out well, do get into our '25, '26 budget, which, I know Mrs. Newman's excited about that, but that's March, so push that off for now. But yes, definitely excited about all these various initiatives at different levels and really certainly it's some really great goals and certainly looking forward to seeing it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. And I have to, I have to give credit to the staff. You know, it's one thing to have a vision of where you want your district to go, but when you have a shared vision that the staff, the administration, the teachers, everybody in between shares that vision, there are things that they're accomplishing that I did not expect. So I really, truly believe in my heart of hearts that, you know, one of the things that makes me proud about Comac is the project-based learning, the authentic learning that takes place in our classrooms. But then to see some of our staff coming up with these authentic spaces, like the, I think it's the Beaver Den, is that right, Mr. Chiani, the Beaver Den at Sawmill?
That is correct.
And, you know, it creates an opportunity where schools feel less institutional. And that's what we want them to feel like. We want our students to come in. So when you see students, you know, outside at the courtyard at the high school, in the library with their friends, it, I hate to say this, it doesn't feel like school. We want our students to feel like they're at home. And I think that we've done a really great job creating that at the high school and it's really time for us to focus on our elementary and to see some of our administrators and our staff creating some of these spaces in our elementary, like the Discovery Den or an agricultural pilot or lunch and learn. It's going to be a great year and I'm really looking forward to that work.
Danny, you still there? Make sure she's... Yeah, good. Thank you. Want to make sure, because now we get to do all the voting parts, so I want to make sure that, definitely she gets the opportunity. So I want to make sure that definitely she gets the opportunity. Oh, it's on, it's on there now?
Thank you.
Okay.
Comac.
You may not, you may not see it.
Because I have it reading.
Okay, well, I get to it. I just refreshed it, thank you. One second, I'm just refreshing board docs. So with that, there are no committee reports. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hender to read our Board of Education statement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Our board meeting has two opportunities for public comment. One, where the public can comment on specific agenda items only, and one at the end of the meeting where the public can comment on other district matters. Please take a white card if you have a question on specific agenda items and a green card if you have questions during public participation on other school matters. Comments must be no longer than three minutes. The district clerk will call each person up by number. We are monitoring the time and will let speakers know when their time is completed. When called up to the microphone, please state your name and whether you are a district resident. Please only speak to the board directly. The board appreciates the community's feedback. The commentary periods are not times for public debate or for answering specific questions where a direct answer cannot be provided. We will make a note of any questions where the answer is not known and provide a response as soon as possible to the person asking the question. Public comment does not allow for positive or negative statements about a specific employee as it relates to his or her job performance. Any matters related to specific students will not be discussed. The president shall terminate the right of any speaker if they go over lengthly, repetitive, disruptive, disrespectful to anyone, or offensive, as well as if the public becomes unruly and lacks respects for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hender. With that, I'm going to open it up. If there are anybody with any, who'd like to speak on comments on specific agenda items only. As there is none, I'm going to be, keep moving through the agenda. I'm going to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution as listed as follows? Be it resolved that the board accept on behalf of the district donations by the following to be applied and requested, and be it further resolved that the district will deposit these funds as listed, and be it further resolved that the board authorize an increase as necessary to the listed budget code for the use of these funds. From Suffolk ASBO, a donation. Can I get a motion, please? Oh, excuse me, and from Helen Flower Farm as well. Now can I get a?
Motion.
Motion. Motion from Dana. Can I get a second from?
Second.
Second from Sue. Any discussions? Again, in behalf of the board, thank you for these donations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the Board of Education meeting July 11th, 2024? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Dana, a second. Discussions, as in the audience today, I'd like to welcome to the Comac family Alexa, Sean, and Emily in the audience, congratulations, welcome.
All right.
As you can see, there's a lot of great opportunities for you coming here in the district. All the things that Dr. Cox and the team here are doing are fantastic, so we welcome you here. Congratulations. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed, number two through 22?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. There are no consent agenda legal items. So be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education places employee 03045 on unpaid administrative leave pending his receipt of a school-building letter or school-district leader certification. May I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Dana, first by Dana, second by Dr. Hender. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the Board of Education goals for 2024, 2025?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carried. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approve the first reading of Policy 1330, Appointment and Designations by the Board, Policy 3410, Code of Conduct, Policy 5520, Extra, excuse me, Extra Classroom Activity Fund, Policy 5620, Fixed Asset Inventories, Accounting and Tracking, Policy 5660, Meal Charging and Prohibition Against Meal Shaming. Be it further resolved that upon the second reading and moves to adopt the policies tonight.
The resolution should be further resolved, waive the second reading.
Sorry, waive the second reading, thank you. So modified as listed. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Dana with second. Any discussions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. I'm going to acknowledge the statement from Bonn Shon King King as listed for the month ending June 30th, 2024. I'm going to acknowledge receipt of the professional services listed by Lewis Jones, acknowledge receipt of Committee on Special Education, and acknowledge receipt of Committee on Preschool Education. I'm going to acknowledge receipt of a $3,000 grant from the Suffolk County Soil and Water Conservation District for a garden-based learning program at Midrakia Sawmill. Going to acknowledge receipt for the June 2024 CD reports. So before I read the next statement, I'm going to basically also let the district know that the Board of Education is continuing to look for the board member. We have four potential candidates who have listed for their potential to be on the board. The board will be discussing with these candidates in a executive session sometime next week. And on the September 5th board meeting, which I'll read in about a second, we'll be further discussing in public what our outcome is after that meeting.
Just the one thing, if you could skip.
Yes.
Internal claims order.
I'm sorry, I missed the internal claim orders, thank you. So can I acknowledge receipt of the internal claim orders monthly update? I'm going to do that, thank you. So the Board of Education of the Comac Union Preschool District shall hold its regular meeting on Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the HUBS Administration Building, 48 Clay Pitts Road, East Northport, New York. It is anticipated the board will make a motion for the purpose of adjourning into executive session at this time. And at 8:00, the board will reconvene in public session for the purpose of holding its regular meeting. With that, I'm going to open up the floor for comments on non-specific agenda board items. As there is none, the board needs to re-enter into executive session for the purposes of the employment history of a particular individual. So can I get a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Everyone enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see you all in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.